I'd like to call the joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission to order. Really happy to have everyone here in the audience and hope that we have some people at home watching. This is being televised by community television and it will be rebroadcast, and so I hope you'll encourage your friends and neighbors that couldn't make it today to watch it on television and give us their comments. Email us, call us, write us a letter. We want to have your thoughts on all of this, these very, very important issues. So may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Graves?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Ruth?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Chairperson Ruth?
Here.
Councilmembers Norton?
Here.
Story?
Here.
Batdorf?
Here.
Termini?
Here.
And Mayor Harlan?
Here. We're not going to have oral communications on any topic that is not on the agenda tonight. We'll save that for our next meeting, but we will be happy to hear your comments during this meeting. What we're hoping to do is to have the staff presentation, and we'll go in sections so we can -- you can speak on each section rather than have to talk about everything at one time. And we'll try to see if there's a consensus about the direction that we want to go in, or if we want to change something or to further study things. We can do that. And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started, I just wanted to make some introductory remarks. I was here when we did the last general plan, as were several people, other people here. Unfortunately, it was long ago, and I think we've forgotten the process a little bit, but we had some good meetings and some good discussions. We've changed course a couple of times, and I just want everybody to remember how important this document is, and I certainly hope that we don't follow the timeline that's in here and have this be in effect for 20 or 30 years. I would hope that we could look at it in another 10 or 12 years, so that we can stay on top of these things. We have to remember our history, I think, and I hope you all get a chance to go to the museum and see the exhibits that are there. They're fabulous. The last time we did the general plan, the primary consensus was that people loved Capitola and they didn't want it to change a whole lot. And so that's what we did. We did change the zoning on Depot Hill to R1. We changed some zoning from where the auto mall is. That was going to be high-density housing at one time. There were another number of areas that we did change and tweak a little bit, and as we developed 41st Avenue, we tried to protect the neighborhoods there and to have a real transition area. That Mick was really important in leading the efforts to transition the area from 41st down to the Village by having it be small businesses and houses and not too congested, and also to have the sidewalks put in and the landscaping. I don't remember the name of the plan, but it was the Capitola Road landscaping.
Yeah.
And to try to beautify that area and to make it look less commercial and industrial and transit down into the beautiful Village. So we've made some changes over the years, and so it'll be interesting to see what the consensus of this group is right now. From the community, I'm not hearing that they want high-density development, and when you walk door-to-door in the elections and so forth and talk to people and say, you know, "What do you like? What do you not like? What do you want us to change?" Their concerns are always parking and traffic and congestion. So I think we have to keep that in mind as kind of an overview of looking at this plan and what we want to look like in the future. And if we make it too dense, people are not going to be happy. They're not going to -- the residents are not going to be happy to try to have to struggle for parking places on their street or to find parking places to shop and so forth. It'll change the character of the city. Anyway, with that, I want to thank everyone for all their time and effort in reading the general plan and reading the staff report and reading all the comments. We do have one additional comment, additional comments on our desk tonight. And with that, if there's not any other comments, we'll go right to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any prepared comments to kick off the evening. I just did want to note that we are conducting this meeting with me as your acting clerk this evening, so if I need a little bit longer to get down the motion and the maker of the motion in a second, please bear with me. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, who has a presentation for us this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers and Planning Commissioners, and thank you for taking the time to have the special meeting on the general plan update this evening. So the purpose of the meeting and the agenda overview, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to consider general plan policy issues. And while staff recognizes that there's probably a lot of minor comments that we still need to work through, the focus of tonight's meeting, we hope, is to stay kind of at a high level and talk about bigger policy issues. And then at the end of the meeting, we will ask that the Planning Commission and the City Council authorize staff to release the general plan and associated environmental impact report for public review. So the agenda is broken up into about six parts. The first part will give a brief general plan update, the background and a status. Followed by that, we'll have some brief comments from the General Plan Advisory Committee Chair, Ed Newman. And then we'll individually discuss the five policy issues that are outlined in your staff report that came out of the General Plan Advisory Committee meetings and open it up for discussion amongst the Planning Commission and City Council. Following those five issues, we'll have a period where there's an open discussion period. If there's any issues or topics that the commissioners or council members wish to discuss, that would be the time to do it. And then finally, as I mentioned, we would ask the Planning Commission to vote to recommend initiating public review and that the City Council concur with their recommendation. So briefly on the background, the general plan update was initiated in the fall of 2010 and included comprehensive updates to the general plan, the zoning ordinance, local coastal program, as well as creating a new climate action plan, an environmental impact report, and then supporting technical studies and reports. As part of the general plan update, the City Council appointed an 11-member General Plan Advisory Committee to promote public participation, represent the various neighborhoods and community interests, and to help staff develop the community's visions and values. In total to date, we've had 19 meetings with the G-PAC. On June 13, 2013, the City Council held a hearing and authorized staff to proceed with a revised work plan and schedule that would prioritize the completion of the general plan update by decoupling the general plan from the zoning ordinance and LCP updates. And the goal at that time was to initiate public review in December 2013. So we released a draft general plan update for the G-PAC in public review on September 9, 2013. Staff received 304 written comments from 13 individuals, and we evaluated each and every comment and responded to those comments and included those responses in your hearing packet for this evening. We had two G-PAC meetings following the release of the documents, and on November 12, 2013, the G-PAC offered a recommendation to initiate public review. And if the G-PAC Chairman has any comments, I would invite him to do that now.
Good evening. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you. It's been a real pleasure to be a part of this process over the past three years.
You might need to move your microphone a little closer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks. When I was first appointed, I was a little skeptical of the process. As it evolved, it became a real challenge and a really interesting project to be involved in. The General Plan Advisory Committee is just what it says, an advisory committee. We don't have, didn't have any decision-making really authority, but we looked at the city in various lenses and tried to provide input. It was a very eclectic group that you appointed to the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I think that's what we really wanted, was a cross-section of citizens of all walks of life and all different ideas and not necessarily professionals in meetings such as you are. And so it made it a really interesting process. The process was led by the staff. We were just sort of assistants to the staff, and it's the staff that really pulled this together, both the consultants and our in-house staff. And we were really fortunate that we had a turnover in planning commissioners twice. So we got the input from three different planning commissioners over the three-year process, and all of them with a great amount of expertise, so it was really actually better than having just one person for the whole time period because they all had a little different point of view. There are a lot of issues that I know almost all of you because I sat on the planning commission with, I think, seven of the nine people here, 10 people at one point or another. So I know all of you have a great deal of expertise and knowledge of the city of Capitola and will have a lot to say about the specific issues. I'll just, I just want to publicly commend the various members of the General Plan Advisory Committee. They really did a good job. They really tried hard. They showed up. They participated. They gave us their ideas. And then the staff is the one that took all that and filtered it and put together something that you have in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so with that, we'll move on to the policy issues, and we've identified five policy issues we'd like to discuss with you this evening. Floor area ratio limits, the future civic center in the Pacific Cove City Hall site, development intensity along Capitola Road, future use of the McGregor property, and then the reference to the north 40s and the west Capitola 41st Avenue neighborhood. So starting with floor area ratios, state law requires the general plans establish maximum intensity limits, and this is typically done by assigning residential densities and floor area ratios in commercial and mixed-use areas. Floor area ratios is the ratio of a total building floor area to its lot area. As you can see by this illustration, a .5 floor area ratio would generally allow a one-story structure to occupy half of its lot or a two-story structure to occupy a quarter of its lot. And then the following illustrations below that show higher floor area ratios and give a schematic of the development intensity that those varying measures would allow. Our existing general plan establishes a .5 floor area ratio limit citywide with the exception of the Village, which has no floor area ratio limits. So one of the key challenges in this general plan is to establish floor area ratio limits which are reflective of on-the-ground conditions while also allowing moderated growth in targeted areas of the city. And it's also important, I think, to note that maximum floor area ratios established in the general plan are not entitlements. Projects do not have a right to realize a maximum floor area ratio because there's a number of other development controls on intensity. For instance, the zoning ordinance restricts the height of a structure, defines the setback requirements, and has parking requirements as well as open space and landscaping standards. And you can also have other forms in your design guidelines related to mass articulation and building form that would limit a property's ability to achieve its maximum floor area So when we reviewed our floor area ratios, the first step was to evaluate what are the existing build conditions on the ground in Capitola today and to try to develop a base floor area ratio for the proposed plan based on that. And so this table just shows some of the floor area ratios that are current in the city. For example, 41st Avenue, you generally see floor area ratios ranging from .4 to 2. In the Village, they generally range from about .8, again, to about 2. And then Bay Avenue and Capitola Road, they're slightly lower. And just some examples, you know, pictures showing floor area ratios. Capitola Mall has a floor area ratio of about .4, and that's largely a result of the large parking lot that they have. The County Veterans Center on the corner of 41st and Jade Street has a floor area ratio of .8. That building has a lot more of a dominating appearance from the street, but again, the floor area ratio is reduced because it does have a relatively large parking lot in the rear of the property. Other areas that have higher floor area ratios on 41st Avenue are the Capitola Beach Villas, which has about a 1.2 floor area ratio, and the Best Western Hotel, which is about a 2.0 floor area ratio. In the Village, the Mercantile has about a .8 floor area ratio. Again, that's a little lower than other properties because they do have a parking lot on-site. The Españo Ad condos is roughly twice that floor area ratio, about 1.7. The Lighthouse Building has a floor area ratio right around 2. And then the building at 316 Capitola Avenue has a floor area ratio approximately 2.5, maybe even a little bit higher. So in addition to developing base floor area ratios, we also wanted to establish some allowance for increased floor area ratios into the future so that if a good project came along that would provide economic vitality and community benefit but needed a little bit more intensity, that there was a provision for them to achieve it. So what we came up with was this increased FAR or floor area ratio allowance. And how we structured it and how we proposed to do it is that any applicant requesting an increase in floor area ratio would be required to get City Council approval based upon the council finding that the floor area ratio increase would result in a superior project with substantial community benefits, that it would enhance economic vitality, and that the project has been designed to minimize adverse impacts to neighboring properties. So during the G-PAC and public review period, we did not receive any public comments regarding the base floor area ratios that we proposed, but we did have a lot of comments regarding the provision for increased floor area ratio. Some of the comments we received was that it should only be limited to hotel projects within the Village and the west side of 41st Avenue and 41st Avenue-Capitola Road intersection. We also received contrary comments, however, that the increased FAR allowance could be appropriate on the east side of 41st Avenue if you incorporate expanded setbacks and set the development away from the residential areas. This table here just gives you a comparison of the existing floor area ratios under the current general plan and those that are proposed under the proposed general plan. And then the right-hand column shows the increase for floor area ratio allowance. So in the Village, we proposed a baseline floor area ratio of 2. The neighborhood mixed-use areas like Capitola Road, Bay Avenue of 1. Regional commercial areas, which is your north portion of 41st Avenue, we proposed 2. And 1.5 or community commercial areas such as the southern half of 41st Avenue. And then the increased floor area ratio allowance, we added a multiplier of 1, 1 extra floor area ratio in the Village and on 41st Avenue that have the neighborhood, or excuse me, the regional commercial and community commercial land use designations. So there's a couple of questions that staff would appreciate guidance on. First, whether the proposed maximum floor area ratio limits are appropriate. I think the options here are to retain the floor area ratios as proposed by staff or to reduce or increase them. Our recommendation would be to retain the floor area ratios as proposed. We think they're reflective of on-the-ground conditions today and would allow other properties to develop as neighboring properties have in the past. The other question, which has been a little bit more controversial, is whether or not the general plan should include a provision for the increased floor area ratio allowance. And the options here, I think, are to allow the floor area ratio increase on 41st Avenue in the Village subject to findings, or to restrict it somehow, perhaps as some have suggested, it'd be restricted to hotels in the Village and the west side of 41st. Or the third option would be not to include the provision whatsoever. Our recommendation would be to allow the increased floor area ratio provision anywhere in the Village or on 41st Avenue subject to findings. And part of that recommendation would be that you can always reduce the maximum intensity later. What we don't want to do, though, is decrease them now, put out an environmental impact report that evaluates the lower number, and later decide to increase it because then we have a sequel problem. And with that, I would open it up for Planning Commission and City Council discussion.
Are there any questions?
Do you know what the FAR, the floor area ratio is for the condos that face Park Avenue?
I don't think so.
Okay. I think that would be an interesting point to know just because I, I'm saying, I think that would be an interesting point to know because it was that development that really triggered the anti-development sentiment in this community back in the '70s. And if that floor area ratio for those condos resembles anything that could be built with these increases being proposed, then I think that's something the community needs to know.
Generally, you know, the general plan would, for residential uses, would have density maximums. I should point out that the proposed general plan would maintain the existing residential densities there in the current general plan. There's no increase there proposed. Floor area ratio we only use to regulate mixed use and commercial.
Right, but you could apply that just to give us a number for, you know, a reference point.
Sure. You know, we just pulled it up on the screen. I mean, just taking an eyeball guess, I mean, it's probably around 1.
1?
1.
No, it's got to be higher than that.
It's got to be 3.
Because there's very little room in the front, there's no side yard setbacks, and there's no, there's parking in the rear.
I'd have to guess 3 or 4.
It looks like there's large courtyards in the center of the development, and those don't count towards floor area ratio. You're just looking at the floor area.
How many stories?
But again, this is just a guesstimate. I would caution that.
Well, it's actually 4 because it has some underground parking element to it, which is what drove up the floor area ratio on, what is that?
Monterey Avenue.
2.5, the underground parking on Cap Ave.
Yeah.
My question is, how do you, if you go back to your proposals, and I'm looking at the visitor-serving, visitor accommodations at .5, one of the most successful hotels we've built is the Best Western, and because of the open space around it, and it's a 2, why would we have the maximum for that be a .5? I certainly agree with the idea of not having an increase for, you know, an increased allowance, but why would we have it so low when mall is at, you know, less than unity?
Those properties on 41st are all, all have commercial land use designations. The visitor accommodation designation is only proposed for the Monaco property, the inn at, the Capitola Inn, Shadow Brook.
Well...
I think that might be the only three properties.
Well, even the Capitola Inn is a good example of something that's so out of the way, and its neighbor is the freeway, that I'm not understanding that. And also, it's confusing to say that something like the Best Western is not visitor accommodations, even though it is, just because it's in the commercial district. I'm just confused.
I think we could certainly increase the floor area ratio to those three sites, 3, 4 sites that we have in the general plan. You know, we do designate those differently because those sites would only have visitor-serving type uses, whereas a commercial designation, you could have a visitor-serving use, but you could also have retail or office professional type uses.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a comment because you're asking for comments on the FAR. I honestly believe that in the general plan draft that the explanation of the FAR is lacking. I don't think the average person in the community of Capitola could understand it. But I understand that everybody that ran for City Council, myself included, and everybody that's presently on the council, has always heard from the community that they like the way Capitola is today. So I'm having some difficulty tonight with the idea of increasing the FAR areas with one exception. I've always liked, and this is kind of a compliment to Dennis Norton, and I don't do this very often, but I'll do it, is that I believe that there could be an increase in the FAR in the business district west of 41st Avenue. And I believe that very strongly, and I think the community could support that. I think the idea of going out on 41st Avenue and seeing a sea of cars is a vast mistake. Housing could be placed on the peripheral, and it would make for a more cohesive development. If one looks at the city of Santa Barbara and La, I'm sorry, wrong name. It has a very Spanish name. There's mall and shopping center. It's very well done, and they do incorporate this idea. But I think we need, my comment is, I think we need a better explanation of FAR. I don't think I could support tonight, and I want to say that really early on, the idea of increased FARs in all areas. I've told you the area that I could support it in. Thank you.
Should we open it up to the public before we start discussing it? And if anyone would like to speak about this issue right now, the floor area ratio, you're welcome to. If you want to think about it and listen to our comments and then speak afterwards, you can certainly do that. We'll kind of run this more of like a workshop rather, an informal workshop rather than a formal council meeting or a formal planning commission meeting because I want everybody to feel comfortable to speak on whatever you want to. Increased density in Capitola is what we're talking about. Good evening.
Good evening. Adam Samuels, Fiber Foil, Salto. I just am interested, Rich just made a comment around a could, and I just wanted to be clear since could relates to Depot Hill, Monaco. You could increase the visitor-serving SAR, but that's not what you're proposing.
No, they are proposing.
Our proposal was to keep it as the .5 that's in the current general plan for visitor accommodations.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Dennis?
I have a question, Ed, just on, if you could come up, Ed. In regards to the general plan process and the consensus or the feeling of commissioners and also the public during that process about development along 41st as compared to the rest of, the rest of Capitola.
Well, when we started the process, we singled out some special areas, one of which was 41st, and we actually spent a lot of time on 41st in the early months of the process. And the process kind of changed as we went, so we've spent more time on 41st than anything else. And what you have in your current proposed general plan has basically been reviewed at several meetings of the General Plan Advisory Committee and also public meetings to deal specifically with 41st.
What I've, what I've heard from the public and feedback is, based on the same line and actually following what Ron said, is that people feel strongly about keeping Capitola as it is and maintain that quality of life, but they're, but they're a lot more, I want to say lenient in their thought about 41st Avenue development. In other words, it's okay to have commercial, it's okay to have a higher density or higher use on 41st Avenue. We would accept that, but not, not bringing that into the other course. And I think if I, if I'm correct, Ron and Mick, and Stephanie, that's been the consciousness even from the last general plan, was that put your development over on 41st, create and allow for a higher density and a higher use over there, but protect the residential areas and the community outside of that area.
Yeah. Let me just add to that, that the concept, I think, that evolved with regard to 41st was that the mall area and the areas around the mall are very outdated and need major, if the economics are there. And this is a 30-year plan, so we don't know how things are going to go. But that's the area of Capitola that there was probably the least interest in keeping the way it is and the most interest in seeing it redeveloped in another way.
Okay. Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Richard, just had a question about how these floor area ratios are going to work with our planned development exceptions. Are planned developments going away? This is going to replace it? Will it, is it proposed that that's going to stay in our zoning ordinance, and this would be layered on top of it in some way?
Well, the zoning ordinance implements the general plan, so the maximums that are established in the general plan would have to be the ceiling, and the zoning ordinance could permit something above that. With that said, I expect that when we update the zoning ordinance, the planned developments will be a topic that we need to get into and really look at. I've heard a lot of conflicting opinions and ideas on how that should work. But through that process, you would not be able to propose development that's more intense than what's allowed by the general plan, if that answers your question.
I see. So this would be kind of like an ultimate ceiling on any planned development?
Correct.
If we kept planned developments?
Correct. And how it typically works is you set a ceiling with your general plan, and then you tighten those limits with your zoning ordinance, having height limits, setbacks, design standards. And, you know, a high floor area ratio doesn't necessarily make a bad project. I think a project can be designed well with a high floor area ratio and be very appealing. You know, I think probably some of those apartments on Park are product of bad design more than high floor area ratio.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think there's some exceptions to what you're saying. And if you could show the screen that says increased FAR allowances, I think it spelled out some conditions that the council or the city staff could meet to kind of sidestep the FARs.
So this, this would, this provision, if you, if we went forward with the increased floor area ratio allowance, how staff proposes that it would work is that any applicant would have to get approval from the city council. And as part of their approval, the city council would have to make these findings listed. Now, so they wouldn't be able to go above and beyond that limit. That would be kind of the bonus ceiling.
Yeah, you see, that, that's a concern I particularly have because I think one of the problems we faced in this community in the past, especially with our zoning ordinance and our general plan, when we build these exceptions into it, it creates a lot of issues that really shouldn't exist because it opens the door to sidestep our ordinances and our general plan. So I, I would certainly not support that at all. At least, that's my individual opinion.
Uh, you know, I think what it does is it creates, at the planning counter, unrealistic expectations on the part of a developer, because they see a hole and walk through it. And I might, I'm on the fence on this one, if it were, uh, they shall meet all of these findings. Because I can see a time when someone could look at economic vitality and think it trumps, you know, the adverse effects of the neighborhood, which is not something we're ready to accept.
That would be the intent, that they have to meet all of those findings as we propose it. And, you know, the idea behind it was, was to tighten up the, the standard. Instead of saying anybody can have a maximum floor area ratio of three in the regional commercial designation, um, we're saying you'd have to make, take an extra step, go to the city council and have these findings be made.
Why, why would we do this? It's not in the existing general plan. And you already said that we could, um, make these exceptions and we've done in the past outside of the existing general plan, which is point five. Why would we open ourselves up to this?
You could just set high base floor area ratios. You don't have to have this provision. Our intent was to allow well-designed projects in key areas of the city to have increased intensity if future decision makers believe it's the right project. So that we don't set a limit so low that if somebody on Forty First Avenue on a small parcel wants to build a, an intense street fronting project, that they wouldn't be able to do it without amending the general plan because they need increased floor area.
You realize how arguable each of these three is?
They're, they're subjective and they'd be at the discretion of the city council.
I think the interesting thing about the slide up here is that we're all talking about Forty First Avenue, but it, the village is the big word in there. And, uh, you know, the, the graphics that you showed, uh, we used to call them the shoreline apartments, which have the largest floor area ratio in the village, uh, is something that we wouldn't do today.
Yeah, my concern is different councils have different philosophies toward development. And I know you've been in this community long enough, you've seen the councils in the past that have supported things like the condos on Park Avenue. And at least for me, that, that just allows an escape clause to not follow the general plan. I think it's a very dangerous thing to put in there.
Some of the thought with the villages is that generally you have a floor area ratio of two or less, but there are exceptions. This building that's shown on the slide here probably is two and a half, maybe even a little bit higher. You know, it fits in, in my opinion, pretty well in the community. So I think you can design a project with higher floor area ratios that fits in the context of the existing built environment. Certainly if we have a hotel in the old theater site, I expect that that would, they would want a floor area ratio higher than two. I've generally heard a desire to, you know, have a project like that happen.
One of the prized architectural features of the village is the superintendent's building. It's two point five. It's gotta be two point five minus three itself. So if you want to dictate design and you want to pull, to pull the village height or the massing down, you could go to a two. But if you want to leave it for architectural, um, some architectural freedom and creation, I think we have to state something higher.
We see the village at two and plus because of the zero setback more than anything else. I mean, and, and the flood plan has a lot to do with that. I mean, here's, here's a house that has the garage on the first floor because it had to. It, it, you know, adds a third again more in the floor area ratio.
And we're going to see that in all new development in the village, except for when you do commercial downstairs.
Adam, may I, if I could make a comment?
Certainly.
I think there are two things, and I just want to be clear on what I think I'm hearing. One is the proposed FAR, which is really being proposed because that's what we have. We have on the street today FAR that are in excess of what our general plan was. And one of the purposes of, of doing such a thorough review and, and a good job on the general plan is so that we don't, five years, ten years from now, throw it away and not read it anymore because it's so outdated. So I think from the, from the perspective of the proposed FARs, I think that it would be, um, to our disadvantage not to accept something that's higher than the point five we have today, just because that's what we have out there already. So am I hearing that everybody agrees with?
It's the exception I think everyone's having a problem with, the above and beyond the proposed.
I think, I think the ones that are above the point oh five or the oh point five are really the exception to the rule. He's showing you a, a, a good example of architecture and the use of a small lot for a single family residence, which is in a floodplain zone, so it has to be two stories. But if he goes back a few slides and picks the most highly, uh, highest rated FAR, or whatever it is, FAR, and goes to the shoreline apartment, the question begs, would we want higher than that today? I wouldn't want that today. If it went away tomorrow in a tsunami or something like that, I wouldn't want them to build back what they've got.
But if I heard correctly, the zoning ordinance and the height and the...
That's the cross from Britannia Arms.
And the setbacks and things could, could limit and keep that specific from happening again. But to keep a point five FAR when you've got, you know, so many buildings that are exceptional, and the ones that I was looking at are recent. So twenty years ago, we weren't thinking about it. But if this document's going to live for twenty years, it's gotta have some room. It can't be the limiting factor, the municipal code, the zoning ordinance. Those elements need to restrict things more.
Council members and planning commissioners, I'd also note that, is it the shoreline apartments? Is that the name for the apartments on the...
That's what I call it. I'm sorry. Uh, it's on, it's on, there it is. That's it.
I think we, they were estimated at one point seven, so there are a lot of structures in the village that are higher. So I think the question is, if that was taken down in a tsunami, good riddance. It's not the most, you know, it's not a building we would like to replicate, but I'm, I'm not necessarily sure that it's a problem with the FAR, where this project has a higher FAR, for example, um, it's more a problem with the design.
It's design. That's the problem. Dennis said it, you know.
I would, I would also point out that today, there's no floor area ratio limit in the village. Somebody could come in and propose eight, and it would be consistent with the general plan. So if it gives some context.
Well, well, there is, because you control mass.
We do through the zoning ordinance.
Through the zoning ordinance. You control mass, so there is, there is a limit to that.
Just not in the general plan.
I'd also like to point out that we're the only jurisdiction that I know that includes garages in FAR. So in other words, we're, we're including part of our structure that no other jurisdiction does in part of our FAR.
Are you talking about just in the village?
No, I'm talking about everywhere.
Everywhere?
Yeah.
Basements as well, as, as few as we get, but...
Yeah.
Well, the problem is, we don't, we don't want to be in a position where the, the community sees us as overbuilding, because they do see that in some areas. They'll say, you know, that seems overbuilt. That seems too large. How did that get built? Those new homes up on, up on Depot Hill, I've heard from some of the, some of the neighbors up there that where the trailer, the mobile home park was, that, that there's not enough setback between those. There's, it's probably what's required, what's allowed today, three feet. But people don't perceive that three feet on either, you know, on either side is enough. They just, they see it as, as being overbuilt. And, um, you know, how did...
That's a zoning issue.
Yeah. And how did that, you know, how did that get done? Or they'll say, you know, similar comments to, to other buildings that seem overly large. Those, those new homes on Capitola Road that just got finished, the other two that got finished, people say that looks like it's too much for the site. So we just have to be really careful about that, that what we allow is, is going to be accepted by the community and will be, be good for the future too, Dennis.
If, if we don't like what's happening in the village now, we should be changing it. If we, if we like it and we're accepting what, what growth and what development we see there, we should have staff design the FAR to what is happening now. And, and if everybody's in agreement that, that, that everything in, in mass and sizing is okay, what we're doing there, just keep it at that. You know, uh, there's no, there's no reason to, to change it. If, if it's, if it's working design wise now and you like the village as it looks now, why, why, why not add design to that? Put your criteria to that?
But the part of the situation is where they're just being redeveloped piecemeal. So we're just seeing a few here and a few there. What if it, the, the majority of the buildings end up being that large? That's what I think I'm afraid of, that people are going to have a problem with. Yes, sir?
I'm David Early. I'm the founding principal of the Planning Center DCNE. I work with Ben and, um, Rich asked me to come up and maybe just give a little suggestion as to where you might head. I think this discussion you're having is an excellent one and points out the fact that on this issue and probably several others that you'll come to this evening, you'll probably need additional discussion time. I don't know that you're going to be able to come to a decision tonight, and the good news is I don't know that you need to. As I think Rich pointed out to you at the outset of the meeting, what we're hoping to move towards tonight is whether you're comfortable with releasing a draft of the general plan, which I know there already is one draft out, but particularly a draft of the EIR, to allow the public discourse to continue. You all are beginning that public discourse here tonight, I think, with very intelligent comments. What I would suggest is that at some point, when you feel like you have really highlighted all of the issues here, that you direct staff to come back to you on this issue and probably others you'll come to tonight with a more structured discussion that addresses some of the points you've made, to allow you to really methodically go through and make a decision. But that in the meantime, I think the key point is to make sure that you have daylighted all of the issues you want to see covered and come to a point where you're clear that the draft document as it exists sets a maximum envelope that you want to discuss. Given what you're saying tonight, I think in this case, I haven't heard anybody say we really need a higher FAR. We need even more exceptions. We need higher bases. It sounds like all of you are saying what we've got in this draft maybe is good or maybe even less, particularly in those exceptions. What that means is that the EIR, if it comes out in the next couple of weeks, will set a maximum envelope in which you would be considering things in the future. And then you will have many months, as the general plan review process happens, to look at that through the lens of the EIR and through the lens of additional public comment and make final decisions about exactly what you want in the document. And so really what we need to be sure tonight is how are we setting a maximum envelope for the EIR analysis? I think in this case, you're finding that you do have that set. And whenever you're comfortable bringing a conclusion to this discussion, staff's heard a lot of excellent points, and I think we can come back to you at a future meeting and do a much more detailed and structured discussion and go through this point by point and area by area, talk about the hotels areas that was mentioned, talk about the village, talk about the exceptions, talk about whether exceptions would have specific criteria and what those would be, and have that as a very detailed and structured discussion and do that on another night. So tonight, again, this question is, do we have a big enough envelope? And are we ready to release an EIR that covers that maximum envelope to allow the future discussion?
Thank you very much. Sam.
One question. Um, the increased FAR allowances and the criteria for those, could those be written so that they're a little bit more objective and a lot less subjective?
Certainly.
So we could maybe, I mean, if we didn't want to completely, you know, tie the hands of future planning commissions and councils, but wanted to maybe leave some flexibility, but have it be very extremely defined. So there's not runaway subjectivity that's going to lead to some of these examples of, 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 um, you know, eyesore projects, so to speak.
I think that'd be a great approach.
Well, yeah, I, I think if everybody was at least willing to kind of look at that, Mick, if you were, had some really teeth about, you know, what does superior project mean? You know, if it had a great design and it was much better than a box that would fit the FAR and look good on Forty First Avenue? But make, make that, um, defined as to what a superior project is. What is substantial community benefit? You know, are there tax revenues? There has to be a certain amount. I, I, I think that having those kinds, I would make everybody, I think, a little bit more comfortable. And it would bridge that gap between having no flexibility, but allowing some so that we get good projects, because I've, I've seen that. A lot of projects that we have are, were basically, I mean, we did PDs and, you know, a lot of them came out to be better than we could have otherwise gotten. So I, I would just propose that.
Sam, I, I, I think I disagree with you, but I'm not sure if I understand, if I understand, if I understand what you're saying. And, and that is, you know, I think we're making it an even less general, of a general plan by doing what you suggest, in that I, I don't hear a real consensus to allow the additional, you know, extra FAR. But there is, seem to be, does seem to be a consensus that point five doesn't work and that perhaps your proposed maximums do. And one sentence in there, you know, pointing people towards, to, to the zoning ordinances, which really are what keep our town the way they are. I think in, in all of our years, the collective years up here, when we look at a project, we don't go to the general plan. We go to the zoning ordinance. That's where it really, the rubber meets the road. So, and I think if people see that in our draft and it's underscored that this is a maximum and it's the zoning ordinance that really will prevail, you'll get less comments like this.
I think the problem is that you say yes to your FARs and then the staff tailors the new zoning ordinance to those standards. And, uh, so you, what you say...
We still get to weigh, I mean, we make it happen, really. Staff just doesn't really let them tell them to do it.
I just want to point out, you know, I don't disagree with you and I don't disagree with Sam, but, uh, you're right. The rubber hits the road when you get to the zoning ordinances and all the things in it.
Well, you know, just to, to raise a point here, and, and there was a major difference between the planning commission and the council on the project on Thirty Eighth Avenue, the senior, the senior housing project. Planning commission unanimously voted it down, council unanimously approved it.
Not unanimously.
Not initially. Let's be a little more accurate.
Boy, you guys are getting defensive.
Anyway, the planning voted it down, council approved it.
Yes.
And the basis for that approval was based in statements in the general plan and the various guidelines and the elements, not the zoning ordinance.
And, you know, that was one of the things I thought of when we were talking about this, is that if we had a, a high FAR, they could have, I would have rather seen them double the rear setback and put another floor on. When you think about that, that's what mitigates the residential impact. We pulled it back, you know, pulled it forward five feet. If we could have pulled it forward twenty feet and given them one more floor, it wouldn't, we probably would have had a less, uh, less of an impact on the neighborhoods.
Except they still don't have enough parking, so we'll, we'll wait and see what the impact of the neighborhoods...
They don't have any money to build it anyway, so we just wait.
My point was, in this case, it wasn't based on the, on the zoning ordinance. It was given its approval based on the general plan.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
In, in an effort not to digress, because we do have a lot to cover, I, I'm, I'm understanding what's been presented us, that what we need to look at is what is the upper limit that we want to test? And this is going to go out for evaluation. I'm concerned that if we don't allow for the extra increases, especially in the village, that's the one that concerns me. We went from existing now we have no limits to a proposed FAR two with, with an addition up to three. I can understand if we don't want to go along with the allowances for other increases. I am concerned about keeping the one in the village. I don't know what an FAR would be for a three story hotel as we don't know what the FAR is for those buildings on Park. I think it would be good if in the next time we come back, you have numbers for us, what those buildings actually are. Because it's easier for us to look at a building, see the number associated with it and make a decision, we like it or we don't like it, or whether it fits. But, but for me right now, I, I mean, specifically, we've been, we've been talking about this superior building and we, we mentioned even the concept of a hotel. And I don't know what that FAR is going to be, but I, there needs to be some allowance for that. Either that or I would just have to support retaining the NA for the, for that village. But it seems like we want to come up with a number. But I think we need to just come up with what our direction was from the consultants, that we're just here to test a number and that's the upper number so that the EIR is valid. Is that what I heard?
Correct.
And so I think we can move forward and, and make a recommendation to accept the proposal on the basis of it's going to get the input back from the public that we want. And then we're going to fine tune wherever that number is based on the input and possibly seeing what those FARs really are visually and what they mean to us.
Could you explain again the rationale for having the increased FAR allowance, rather than we're already increasing it from the existing floor area ratio to perhaps the proposed? But then why the additional on top of that?
The baseline floor area ratios we developed were based largely upon the existing built conditions in the various neighborhoods of Capitola. So that's what we used for the baseline. And then we looked at it and said, well, this is a thirty, twenty, thirty year document.
And then we looked at it and said, well, this is a 20, 30-year document. In the future, in our mind, it's very conceivable that you could have a well-designed project come in, whether it be a streetfronting project on 41st Avenue, such as the Fairfield or the Best Western, a building such as that that needs higher intensity, or in the village where you might have a village hotel that my guess is would come in between two and a half or three, so that we could allow those projects without amending the general plan. But keeping in mind that you can tighten up the regulations through your zoning ordinance.
But wouldn't they be allowed to ask for a variance instead?
Not to the general plan, no.
They would have to do a general plan amendment.
Correct. And we generally want to avoid going down the path of amending our general plan.
The highest FAR in the village right now is 2.5, correct?
Thereabout.
Why not just make that the maximum FAR in the village?
But that's certainly an option.
And not open the door to possibly more? And, you know, perhaps no one in this room wants a hotel in the village with more than a 2.5 FAR.
Well, I-
You know, I don't really care what the FAR is on the hotel. It's all in design and how it fits in with the whole scheme of things.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think the problem exists here is FAR is so poorly put into this document that the general public doesn't understand it. If you had them vote on, do they want a hotel down there? Yes. Do they want it to fit in with the scheme and the size of things down there? But if you say 2.7 and it exceeds the bluff height by 30 feet, everybody'd say no. So it's all in how it's perceived by the public.
But we also have to remember it's 20 years from now, we're going to be saying the same thing, and the as-built is so much higher than .5 now. I'm just wondering if three's going to be such a stretch 20 years from now. I have a question, though, if I can ask. The EIR, does, is the increased allowance, is that included in the EIR? So if we remove it, then the EIR will be smaller than that if we decide that we want it later?
Yeah, we drafted the EIR with the maximum limits that we presented here this evening, again with the idea that if the planning commission city council want to back down and reduce those limits, the EIR would still be whole. It becomes a problem if we start increasing significantly.
Rich, on the Capitola Road mixed-use area, you're proposing a 1.0 FAR.
Correct.
Now, was that based on most of the uses that would be on the western end of Capitola Road towards 41st Avenue or down towards the village? Or, you know, you've got the higher densities up there, the more lot coverage. Once you get past 45th Avenue, then you tend to get into more R1 uses and there's, you know, a few commercial uses in there. So that FAR would seem to be much less between 45th and the village as opposed to 45th and 41st.
You're right. When we looked at Capitola Road, I mean, the Flory ratios that exist there today are generally below one. The commercial developments of large parking lots are set back from the street front. So that's why we put it at one. Most of those properties aren't realizing a one Flory ratio now. In addition, through the G-PAC process, we did, Capitola Road had a lot of discussion. We'll talk about it a little more tonight, and there was debate over how much they, you know, the public wanted Capitola Road to develop and how much growth they wanted to see there.
Would it be feasible to have 45th Avenue as a kind of a demarcation line that you have an increased FAR between 45th and 41st at 1.0 and retain it at one-half down to the village so you can create that and retain that transition area?
You certainly could. I would recommend against .5 in most places of the city. I mean, a residential lot is allowed to get up to 58% Flory ratio, I think. So I think that number's just unrealistic. I don't think it's been observed, from the best I can tell, for decades here. So I just don't think that's a good number. I don't, I don't think it's reflective of what we see in the existing built environment.
I'm just thinking, I'm looking at the, thinking of the lot on the corner of 47th and Capitola Road, that multiple unit development right there, it's been there for years. It's probably on possibly three lots. If that were demolished and rebuilt and it had a 1.0 FAR available, there could be a building constructed there that met all the zoning requirements, met all the general plan requirements, but it could be totally incompatible with the neighborhood.
You know, technically, it's probably possible, but I think the zoning ordinance would, you know, have limitations as well. And a one, you know, again, a one Flory ratio would allow a two-story building on half the lot, one story and the entire lot. Give some perspective.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just one final question. I think we ought to move off of FAR, but I'm hearing from Linda and I heard from you that the proposed increases to the FARs are based on what's now there. But when I look at the village that has had no FAR for years, the preponderance of the village is not what you're proposing. You have picked the exception, the high FARs, which are the exceptions in the village. And I think mixed point is, are you familiar with what's on 47th and Capitola Road? It is a series of five or six small cottages all linked together with a parking area in front, and if they put that as a one or above as a future, it could be probably the worst development from 45th to the entrance to the village that we'd ever have. And there's got to be, and I understand you hope to catch all this in the zoning ordinance with setbacks and design guidelines and the rest of it, but I think setting too high or picking the exception to be what we want to go to is the wrong way to go. And that's what I'm seeing here, and that's what I heard from you and Linda. You said that the exceptions in the village are why we're going there. Well, some of the exceptions in the village weren't built in the last 20 years. They existed before 20 years ago. And I think we're on real slippery ground here unless we have as, and I don't think we need to get as specific as Sam said, but unless we get some real verbiage in here relative to the FAR and what we're trying to do.
Yeah, just to clarify, the baseline Flory ratios, I don't think we're basing on the exceptions. I think if we did a, you know, an exhaustive study of Flory ratios in the village, it'd probably come out around 1.5, give or take. There's a lot of buildings down there that are two, and from our perspective, if there's a lot that have a two, then it's probably fair that other property owners could achieve a relative development intensity. The increased Flory ratio allowance that we've talked about, that does go above the baseline, and that's why we tried to make it not, you know, that you had to go through and get a city council approval with some type of findings. And we recognize that's an issue and that's why we're talking about it tonight. And there's more than one way to go about it. You could set higher base Flory ratios and eliminate it, but that might be an easier process for every property owner to go through. So in our mind, it was a way to tighten that up a little bit. At least that was, that was the approach.
And again, looking at the future, if we have a whole lot of buildings that are like the superintendent's building, people are not going to be happy with that. And, you know, so we can look at those exceptions and say, well, it's a well-designed building, it's attractive, people like it. But when we had this discussion, we were talking about whether we were going to allow three stories. I can't remember what project it was about, and we said, what if the whole village goes to that? We don't want the whole village to go to three stories because that would completely change it. People are going to say, what, you know, what happened here? What are they doing? So we just have to be cautious. And I don't want to base a decision on what's on the ground now either, because we've made some mistakes in the past and we've overbuilt some sites, and I don't want to do that again. So just because we have some that are there, that's, that's not reason to keep on making the same mistake if that's what we perceive as making a mistake. Dennis?
Are we going to be discussing at the zoning, at the zoning review level, redefining what FAR is?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
When we get to the zoning ordinance, will we be, will we be re-discussing-
Yes.
-the issue of what FAR means?
Yeah, I think we'll definitely take a look at how it's calculated and have that discussion and adjust it as necessary.
Which we had once before. We had long, long, long discussion meetings about FAR when we were talking about the porch and we were talking about, you know, things like that. I remember that.
We made a lot of mistakes with that, too, so we need to relook at it.
Yeah.
But what we're talking about FAR now applies to what it is. When we're talking about 2.0, we're talking about FAR, we're talking about under today's, what we define today as the criteria for FAR. We may be re-discussing that, if I'm correct, at the time that we go to the zoning-
Correct.
Any other questions or comments about this? Okay, you have enough information to come back with some additional, and the consultants, right, this is an issue we're going to have to talk about more.
Yeah, we'll bring this back if the commission and council authorize, initiate public review. We'll gather more public comments and I'm sure we'll discuss it at length and through the adoption hearings.
Do we need a straw vote?
I think we need to give some kind of direction for the EIR, because we don't want the EIR coming back with huge densities, I don't think, allowing large densities.
Do we need to make a proposal to accept the staff recommendation or to alter it? Is that what you need at this point?
I don't think you need to. It's, you know, certainly it's your discretion. I think in terms of the environmental impact report, if we get authorization to proceed this evening, even if we decide to adjust down the Flory ratios, we wouldn't change the analysis in the environmental impact report, because they would still meet the requirements of CEQA.
But the project description would change in the EIR.
Yeah.
Is it enough that you've heard our concerns?
I think so. All right, we'll move on to the next issue, and I think the issues get easier from here, I hope.
Yeah, good luck. They're going to get easier and you're following it with this.
You're an optimist.
All right, another issue that was a subject of significant debate during the G-PAC process was the future of the Pacific Cove City Hall sites and the idea that a civic center might be considered in the future. So as we all know, the city owns approximately eight-acre property here with City Hall and lower and upper Pacific Cove are. And a couple, there was a few projects that emerged through the G-PAC and public process that tended to have broad support for the city to proceed with in the future. The first being the multi-level parking structure on upper Pacific Cove, the eventual development of park and recreation facilities in lower Pack Cove, and then someday to be able to relocate our police facilities and our emergency responders out of the floodplain. Nonetheless, despite the broad public support for those, I think individually and collectively all those projects will present significant challenges to the city to realize the construction of. So one of the ideas that we had was, you know, there might be opportunities by relocating and consolidating civic uses to fulfill those individual city priorities. For instance, civic uses could be relocated to lower Pack Cove, fronting on Monterey Avenue, allowing the City Hall site to be redeveloped with commercial uses. Civic uses could also remain on the current City Hall site, and a portion of lower Pack Cove could be developed with commercial uses. And then there's also the library. There's funding available to construct a new library, whether it stays at its current location or is moved, I think is still a question that we need to answer. And so the thought was that with all these moving pieces, we wanted to have something in the general plan that allowed consideration of comprehensive redevelopment of this property in the future. So the general plan and public comments that we received were generally to remove this language altogether from the general plan. And I've got the language highlighted on this slide. In both cases, we say, consider moving the City Hall to a new location, either to a higher elevation portion of the property or to an entirely new site within the city. And then in regards to the library, again, consider relocating the library from its current location of Warf Road as a superior site becomes available. So the questions we have here is whether or not the general plan should include statements for the city to consider the City Hall Pacific Cove redevelopment options, and if the general plan should include a statement to consider other potential library sites. I think the options are pretty straightforward, retain, modify, or eliminate the language. Staff's recommendation would be to retain the language to allow flexibility for the city to consider opportunities as they may arise to fulfill some of our priority projects in the future.
Are there questions?
Could you go back a slide, please?
Sure.
No, there we go. I don't see anything here that's, that's speaking to a civic center.
It's not a civic center necessarily talks about relocating the City Hall, potentially relocating a library.
Well, just these two statements don't bother me, but the language in the staff report does, when it goes on, you know, in more detail. These are pretty benign statements and reflect the generality and the reality of us being at sea level right now. There were problems with this language?
Correct. They wanted the language to come out about considering moving these facilities.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the reason that we wondered about that was that we weren't sure that there had been enough, there had been enough public input about that possibility, and to put it in here, you know, gets it one step further without the public ever having really discussed it.
This is either elevating it or moving it, seems benign. It said something like-
If it costs us $25 million.
No, this doesn't say that. This says either elevate it or move it, you know, move it to a trailer park. I mean, there's, the moving of City Hall up or over has nothing to do with a civic center, as far as I'm concerned. If you have something in here that said contemplate spending $25 million on a new civic center, I'd be upset. I think we may be reading something into this because we know what a potential option might be. This seems pretty simple. I don't, I don't know. Maybe we could, maybe we could trim it a little bit.
Well, maybe without the underlying sentences. I mean, for the City Hall and Police Department, I mean, in our experiences in 2011, I think we all realize the precarious situation of being in the floodplain. And I just think it should be something that future councils and planning commissions should be aware of and maybe consider, and if an opportunity comes, get it out of the floodplain, but not telling them necessarily how to do it, not telling them to, because these are policy statements, and they don't necessarily need to consider moving City Hall, okay? There's another way they can do it. Same thing for the library. I don't know that we need to have a policy that, that they consider relocating the library. I think that that would just naturally come out of maintaining a public library within Capitola that is appropriately sized and located to serve the entire community. Could be where it is, could be some other place. I don't know that we need to put in those other statements, which are a little bit kind of push-pulling, to push people in a certain direction. So I'm happy with those underlying sentences, bolder sentences, just be removed from those policy statements.
Sure.
I kind of concur with what Sam said. I think the key word in there is this is consider. That's, that's the word. This is just not tie anybody's hands to look at options should they become available. I'm not sure whether there is a belief that the new library is going to be built at the existing site. That's the only reason why I think it's important that it mentions that if a superior site becomes available, because again, we bring in another consideration. It's got to be a site better than where it previously is located. But generally, I think I agree with both of you, that it's, it's just allowing it in there to consider, because if it's not in there, then it's not, not even an option. And I think we don't want this 20-year document to handcuff us to not be able to make decisions if a better decision comes available.
Well, I don't think it's taking out flexibility by removing those sentences at all.
But consider renovating or moving the facilities to get it out of the floodplain.
Wouldn't we do that no matter what when it, when it came up? I mean, why, why put it in this document? Of course we would do that when it comes up. I mean, if a site comes up, staff's going to bring it up to us and we're going to consider it then.
It's not, this is not a big deal. I mean, the underlying stuff going out, take it out.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a comment. Sam, I don't often disagree with you, but-
Oh, you do all the time.
Well, I was trying to be nice.
I know.
You know, we've been in the floodplain here at City Hall for 66 years, my understanding when the city was founded, and there's never been a flood here. We had an infrastructure breakdown and the Police Department got flooded and we had some damage to the carpets here in City Hall. But those people that didn't say it was a flood, but said it was an infrastructure break, got paid on their insurance policies. Those that called it a flood, didn't. We have to be very careful what we deem a flood or floodplain- We have to be very careful what we deem a flood or floodplain zone. You know, the pipe was sufficient for 66 years under there. A correction was made to the pipe out at Monterey Avenue and they created a venturi effect that just erupted in the middle of a mobile home park and flooded this facility. Now that's me talking and I'm no engineer or anybody, but I've lived here, you know, for a number of years and I live in the same floodplain that this building is in and I have yet to be flooded out. I've been asked to move from my house several times when a flood was imminent on Soquel Creek. It never happened, thank God. But I think these statements, the add-on statements are just fluff. You know, we don't have the money for a civic center. We don't have the money to move this or upgrade this facility at this time. But I think the statements, the other two statements above, the ones that are not bold, do it for you. If and when we have an opportunity to remodel here or somewhere else, either the library or the City Hall, we should take advantage of it. And that's the statement. I don't think we need the add-on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would, I actually do support taking a look at moving City Hall. I think it's an essential functionality of the city, something that we need to look at and when we do have the flood, if that does happen, this needs to be a place that's going to be in business and be able to operate during that time. It took dispatch center in the county a long time to finally figure out, to get their dispatch out of the basement up to a higher ground. And, you know, the floods in 82 could have very well been as damaging here if those trees had dammed up in Soquel, dammed up at our bridge down here. So the potential and the likelihood is there. I think it's something we should have a goal and I almost would think that it even should be mentioned under the safety portion of this, if we need to take our central business areas and those government offices and move them to a place where we can do business when we need to open an EOC or have that business open during those times.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I agree pretty much with everything everybody's saying. On the, the first one, if you remove the statement and you don't add the word "or moving," then you're just allowing consideration of a renovation. You're not really allowing consideration of a move. So I would, I would support adding "or moving" to that sentence and eliminating everything that's underlined on the other two because the lower one says maintain a library that's sized and located to serve. If you have to move it, you have to move it. Maybe, anyway, that's, that's my thought.
Other comments?
Well, this is, I think, somewhat related and it'd be the, the goal in the general plan that says utilize City Hall Pacific Cove area for the benefit of the community. I think this is related to that. And my comments are addressed to the, to the parking structure and the comments in the general plan that are related to the parking structure. The action plan is very specific and does not allow any flexibility or consideration of not having a parking structure. And I, for me personally, I think the language is almost too concrete. It locks us into that. I think the community deserves a chance to look at some alternatives when it comes to spending 15 or 20 million dollars to add additional parking in the community and we've got a temporary lot that they may find sufficient. So I would like to see the language, it's on page LU 37 in the general plan, the action LU 11.1. I would just like to see the language in that have a little more flexibility that would allow the city to consider it or not consider it rather than have it specific that it will be designed, approved, and financed and constructed.
We can add the word "consider" there to provide a little flexibility.
I think we need to be really careful about talking about these issues too concretely because they've never been brought to us by the public in, I think, our collective years here that I think all of us can say, nobody's come to the meeting to say, move City Hall, move the Police Department, build a new civic center, move, you know, do the library over here. You know, we haven't really gotten that kind of feedback from the community, so. And we just went to the voters with a bond measure because we needed the money to help fix the streets. And so it makes me nervous talking about big giant projects that really has, as Gail said, you know, haven't really been vetted by the public. We haven't had that many meetings where we've talked about it or, or gotten their feedback on it. I don't think that my neighbors are going to be real crazy about spending a whole lot of money for parking for the village. And I think other neighborhoods would, would say the same thing, Cliffwood Heights and, you know, I don't know about the Jewel Box, but, you know, other neighborhoods are going to say, really, you're going to spend that kind of money for more parking for the village? Isn't what you have enough? We'll, you know, we'll find that out after the new parking lot is, is developed. But, you know, in all these years, we haven't had any floods, so not to say we won't, but, you know, that was kind of a once in a lifetime, I think, situation and we weathered the storm and we, it was a hassle to move the Police Department, but I can't get too excited about moving the Police Department right now. I mean, if it was a repeat problem, then I guess we would, but I think we have Soquel Creek taken, pretty well taken care of, Dennis.
Regardless of the upper parking, regardless of the upper parking lot, I think there's been a real clear message, both from the G-PAC Traffic and Circulation Committee and the community, that the lower Pacific Cove property should be a, a public park. And that's been clear all the way through this process. And even in the committal to do that parking lot down there, the city council made a commitment that it will go to, that someday go to, to a public park. And that is the best and highest use for, for this community regardless of the upper, of the upper Pacific, but knowing that you need to do a parking lot up above, it certainly should be something that, that, this is a general plan. We need to consider things that can be done in the process that would benefit the community. So I'm not saying, I'm not against putting, it may work, but at the same time, I think it should be considered.
Yeah, I'm not saying strike it. I'm just saying allow it for consideration, but the language in there now says it shall be done.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to go along with that, that suggestion because I see where the parking structure works in the village. I see where it works in conjunction with other things happening in the village. There's almost like a domino effect that's going to happen here. You know, we, we talk about funding and I appreciate your comments about funding. Nobody wants to get us out on a limb and spending money we don't have, but there are things that come up which allow us to do projects. You know, the definition between a good project and a great project is one that we get additional funding for. And I'm going to segue here a little bit, we may talk about it later, but there's, today in the paper was about the approval of the roundabout in Watsonville. And of that, they've received $200,000 funding from Air Quality to do that, which meant that when we talk about possibly doing one in this town, those funds are available. And I don't want to discount the idea of when we look at possibly considering a City Hall. It's, yeah, we don't have $25 million to build that City Hall. That's accurate. But if there's money available through FEMA for relocation of a Police Department and there's money available through CBG for doing projects and we take these funds that are going to be, you know, allowed for us to use, we have to consider. That's all I'm asking here is to consider that there is options, we can go in a direction we can go. I'm not comfortable with the, with the decision about the flood, saying we haven't had a flood. I sat here a couple of weeks ago and we approved a, finally adopting or not approving, but we made a recommendation to support approving of the fire code document, which I was told over and over again, historically this council rejected. And I'm going to tell you, being in that profession, you know, it was, it was amazing to me that a city doesn't adopt that, okay? Because fires happen, the Oakland Hills, those people never thought that was going to happen. One day they were sitting looking at a barbecue and their house is on fire. 3,000 homes were lost. We have potential for, for a flood here and we have potential, we have definite sea rise that's going to happen. I think we're not doing a job looking at a 30-year document if we're not going to at least consider that we need to relocate these facilities to another place, so. But I'm okay with the parking structure considering it because it's a, personally, I don't believe that we're going to see a parking structure if we don't see a successful hotel because I don't think it's going to bring us the revenue and we're going to be eligible to get those funds if they don't happen. But I just want to say that in this document, we should be considering that should things happen, should our position change, we can move in a positive direction.
How about comments from the public? Is anyone that would like to speak on this issue? Libraries, City Hall, Police Department? Good evening.
My name's Kathleen Atkinson. I live on Depot Hill and I'm really here because I always show up because I am concerned about the Monarch Cove issue, but I also am, I actually wrote the City of Santa Cruz's climate adaptation plan and it's, I have to say, it's a fairly depressing area to be in because it is happening. And as much as I know we're limited in funding and I would like us to, to be good stewards of our financial resources, I also think it's a really good idea to consider as we do move forward, what's going to happen because sea level is going to rise. So it doesn't mean we have to completely redesign any of our facilities right now, but having an emergency center that's located in an area that's not going to be flooded is a really good first step. So I would like to support just considering, considering climate adaptation as we move forward with any kind of investment.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
So I think what, what I've heard from the majority of the group is that we should generally remove these statements, but as Commissioner Smith pointed out, move in the word "moving" on the first bullet to consider renovating or moving the existing City Hall?
I would agree with that.
I support moving.
We'll move on to the next issue.
There's been a, kind of a, to me, a red herring in the room tonight and it's mainly from us up here. Some of us have talked about this being a 30, 30-year plan, yet on page 11, the introduction, this document calls it to be a 20-year vision and it basically says it needs to be clearly written in the paragraph above that. And I think our comments with regards to the FAR were on the line from all of us that we need some clarification there to really let the public know what we're thinking. But this idea of a 30-year document, I, I think if this document lasts 20 years and it takes six or eight years like this one did to update it, maybe that's where we're getting to the 30, but I don't want to give people a false impression because the ER is predicated on this being a 20-year document and the rest of it, so.
Well, I'm a strong proponent of that because I think you need to take a good look at your community every once in a while and it's sooner than 20 years because it goes by like that. And since we're all built out predominantly, we have a few empty lots, we're just going to be looking at infill and we're going to be looking at, you know, these kind of, these kind of issues. But it's really important, issues have come up during the year that, that were perfect for discussion for the general plan and yet we kind of do things piecemeal. I think it's, it's just really healthy for all of us to look at the general plan at least every 10 years and then maybe take a couple of years to, you know, do the work. But there, the, the community may be a little different that time and, and want different things and we may have sea, well, we will have sea level rise, we're going to have to deal with that and we're going to have water issues and other things. So I think it's, I think it's just healthy to look at it more, more often. Okay, next issue?
The next issue is Capitola Road and its proposed development intensity. So Capitola Road, as it currently exists, is a mix of commercial residential and mixed use development. The current general plan designates the area as residential, commercial, and commercial local. Both those designations allow all uses, commercial, residential, and mixed use development. In the proposed general plan, we are suggesting changing the designation to community commercial and neighborhood mixed use, which are essentially just different terminology. They allow the same uses as what is in the current general plan. So there's no change proposed for Capitola Road. There was significant debate about the future of Capitola Road through the G-PAC process. We did receive comments of some folks who desire to see Capitola Road develop with boutique hotels and more retail stores to strengthen the connection into the village. And then conversely, we had comments and concerns with compatibility of those uses to adjacent residential uses. It's important to point out that the draft general plan does not encourage intensification or the introduction of boutique hotels, but the current general plan and the zoning ordinance as well as the proposed general plan would allow those types of uses. And so the question here is simply whether or not we retain the existing general plan development allowances or if we should add statements to encourage or discourage hotel and retail development or retain existing development allowances and then further refine those as we update our zoning ordinance. Our recommendation would be to retain the existing general plan development allowances as they are today.
Is it working?
Well, you don't, I, I don't think we've seen a lot of projects come forward that are real intense on Capitola Road. You know, it's a, it's kind of a different road. It's got, it's got a character unique to its own because there is a mix of all use types there. So, you know, some, I think some folks like that, living in kind of a mixed use area and having different uses within the same corridor. Others may not. It's somewhat subjective.
As I stated before, there's a real demarcation line there at 45th Avenue.
Yes.
And, you know, I, I think everything west of 45th needs to be retained at that density and everything east of 45th needs to be retained at its current density also.
Seems like leaving it alone because we, we, it's a very delicate area right there. You know, could easily become not good.
Dennis?
I have a little problem with the mixed use and from 45th to the village, doing, mixing industrial area with a residential area. I, I look at that as a blighted area, at least on, I'm trying to think, the southeast side from, from 45th down. There hasn't been much improvements besides Van Alstine's building there along that whole stretch. Everything is pretty much, well, we had a one bed and breakfast come in there, I think, that, that came in.
Out of business.
Pardon me?
I think it's out of business now.
Out of business.
The three, the three houses were just infilled.
And so what we have now is we have a semi-industrial sales, sales building next to residential and multiple and in single family. It seems to be.
The screen shop, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Glass shop there?
Yeah. It used to be a furniture store.
Should make that a store.
That maybe there should be more definition of what is allowable during, in that section there. If we, if we prefer to have a residential, then we should say that, you know, that, that this is an area that, if we're making that transition to a residential in that area, because across the street, there's no change in that. That's the Shadowbrook, the Shadowbrook property and it's possible, I guess, that they could come with an application for something different.
There wasn't one time for an office building there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I agree though. I think that that really is, that, that 45th is the transition point for going to residential and I think that we should do everything we could to encourage some type of residential in that, in that section. And I'm not really against bed and breakfasts. I mean, that, that's not, that's a compatible use in, in a residential area.
But what, so keeping things just the way they are, I'm, I'm a proponent. I'm speaking in favor of that. Leave it alone, you know.
It seems to be working.
Yeah, it seems to be working. Was that option one? Keep it as it is? One of those options.
Yeah.
Retain existing?
I don't, I don't think it's working.
You don't?
I, I don't think that mix is good. I, I think that there's, that we're not, we're not, it's not a good transition visually or use-wise for having a series of driveways for commercial areas along that area.
But nothing is, nothing that we do here is going to change what's there now and.
Oh, yes, it could.
You know, I don't think so. I think that this is not going to close down the glass shop.
No, it isn't, but if the glass shop went out of business and chose to rebuild, then you would put in what Dennis is saying.
Well, that's more of a zoning use.
Yeah, then you guys deal with a use permit on it.
So having only sat on the general plan committee for three meetings, the representative from that area was specifically talking about the type of development you're talking about, light industrial being incompatible with the surrounding residential areas. And so if there's a way that we can zone that, you know, with, with less impact on those neighborhoods in the zoning ordinances, that's, I think, the way we should go and that's what they're really asking for.
Change the principal permitted uses.
Yeah, change the principal permitted uses. This light industrial with noise, early in the morning with trucks going out and things like that, that's what that neighborhood doesn't like.
And that's not really what that zone is, you know, is. Thank you. It, it, I think the glass shop is a little beyond what we envisioned.
I'm not even sure that would be allowed today.
Correct, exactly. Well, we can, we can trust that then.
We could rezone at R1 and take care of the problem.
Yeah, we lose the transition. We lose, the transition's what we want.
The general plan land use designation would not allow industrial uses, just be commercial, or, pardon me, commercial, residential, or mixed use, but then you can further refine that with a zoning ordinance by establishing your principally and conditionally allowed uses. And that's how I would suggest we go about handling it.
Or you could zone at R1 from 45th down.
Correct.
And that, that way would be very clear that no more businesses in there if one burned. If one burns down, you've got to put a house there. That would protect that neighborhood. And we did have the three Lindicky houses that went in there a number of years ago that were nice.
The other issue that the, I remember the committee brought up was encouraging pedestrian, a segue pedestrian-oriented, not just commercial, not just focusing on commercial, but focusing on what you can put in that area that draws people from the Village up to 41st Avenue and gives them a reason to walk and vice versa. I think that's really important.
What is the zoning on the Shadowbrook property there?
Visitor-serving, I think.
I'm not sure what the zoning is. The general plan land use designation is visitor accommodations.
Okay.
If I have one comment, it goes back to even when we're talking about the floor area ratios along with this, is that we need to be consistent when we go back to the zoning under what the general plan is because it's just, this has opened up so many inconsistencies with, you know, what the land use designation versus what the zoning is. And now we've added some new terminology that kind of confuses it just a little bit. So I think the consistency is going to be, if we, and I think Mick was right today, the screen shop wouldn't be able to be built there. But I think we just need to look at how we apply that consistently throughout all those, the policy of the general plan and the policies we have in place.
But if somebody came into that building and wanted to do, and required a use permit, we would be, right now, under existing zoning, we would have to grant them that use permit to go into that building.
Our current zoning wouldn't allow that, screen shop.
I know, but if you're not changing use, you could actually come in there with something different.
Oh, no, I understand. I'm just saying, because with the land use designation and we've added some new terminology, we just need to be careful we're consistent because it gets confused, visitor accommodations versus visitor-serving. And those, that's an overlay to another zoning. So I, we just need to be careful how we look at that when we do the zoning so we're not inconsistent in the two.
If you look at the trend on that section of Capitola Road, there's been, you know, in the last 10 years, there's been the three Lindicky homes built. Across the street, there's been those three new homes that have been built. Only one of them faces on Capitola Road. The mortgage company is now being converted to multi-residential, a duplex. And the bed and breakfast, I think, has been returned to a single-family. So the trend is toward residential and not commercial in that area. The only change in commercial in that area in the last 15 or 20 years that I can recall is Kirby Nichols Real Estate Office changed hands and became a different real estate business. And that's it.
And then down the street where the First Fives and the AAA, that was a new building, I think. Because I remember when we did the birmingham there, instead of having just flat lawn, we had them do a birmingham, which made it look much better. There's a dentist office in there and...
I think we're hearing all the same thing here. One thing we, I agree with you, Mick. I think that the idea of separating it at 45th to Warf Road and from 45th to 41st is important to do in this document. I'll tell you why. Not with what's been built, but what exists out there in that same area is the Hayford Lot, and that could be, under our present zoning, developed as commercial of some kind.
Too wide, three deep, I think.
Right, yeah. And thank God that the development that has occurred that you spelled out, Mick, has all been what we want, not what we don't want. So why not just give it where it's going, you know? I mean, protect it.
And the general plan that's proposed would have a community-commercial designation on the areas west of 45th, east of 45th, it would be neighborhood-mixed-use. So I think that would address that concern. And then the zoning ordinance will be tailored to those land use designations.
And hopefully the FAR also.
Yeah.
That should be really an economic development zone through that section there. I mean, you look at some of the land uses up there where the church is and next door to that where that big, big, open concrete area is for parking, it has so much potential of being something good civic use as a development area, as well as the Billiards Place and Dharma's, that whole section there is really underutilized for a commercial area. That should be defined as an economic development zone through that whole section.
Isn't that, isn't, don't we have that designated for possible multifamily, that area is also...
In the housing element, you're right.
In the housing element, it's also, yeah. It's targeted for that. Any other comments or questions from the public or from planning commissioners? Okay, I guess you have enough direction.
Thank you. Next issue is the McGregor property. The general plan includes a statement to consider future visitor accommodations on the McGregor property, and I've got the statement here on the screen. During the G-PAC and public deliberations of this, we received recommendations to delete the statement to consider future visitor accommodations on McGregor, given the council's recent decisions to pursue a park on that property. So the options here would be to retain the language, to continue to consider future opportunities, or to simply remove the language. Our recommendation would be to retain the language, again, given the long-term planning horizon of the document, so that if opportunities present themselves down the road, that we could consider a hotel or other visitor-serving uses there.
Dennis?
I have some strong feelings on this. You can't tell kids in our community that you're going to build them a skateboard park and BMX park and the people, the dogs, and say, "Well, you know what? We still have the choice to someday just take it out from underneath you and put a hotel there." Now, if you want to word it that there's still an option to do that, what you could do is that consider development of the site with visitor accommodations if and when that other recreational opportunities are provided somewhere else in the city for that. In other words, it would only be considered if you find a place for those recreational opportunities. That would be a substitute.
I think that's a great suggestion.
I want to go back just for one second with the last item, because I forgot to bring this up. Do we want any language in there about strengthening connections from Capitola Road to Capitola Village?
When we discussed that with the G-PAC, their recommendation was that we focused on improving pedestrian and bicycle connections, so that people are encouraged to walk and ride their bike between 41st and the Village.
That's in the circulation element, so it's fine.
So we are going to modify it to reflect more of the pedestrian-bicycle connection.
Okay.
It's a good downhill ride, it's not a great uphill ride.
Yeah, walking uphill keeps you healthy. The previous discussion had been to keep what's going on on 41st Avenue in the higher-density areas there, and to have this nice transition area with the wider sidewalks and the landscaping. And we had to get right-of-way from, I think, all those residents to do that at the time and landscaping. So at the time, there was felt that we didn't want to have a strong connection with the Village. We wanted them to be separate. And so I didn't, wasn't sure what your strength in the connection, connections to Capitola Village, John. Okay, comments on this now?
Sam?
Yeah, I have comments. Thank you. One, you know, I really support the park at McGregor, and I agree with you, Dennis. But, you know, future councils may find a need to, that maybe the skateboarding there is just not compatible, and they haven't relocated it someplace else yet. And so, again, I think it's a question of flexibility and allowing for that either the recreational facilities are either relocated, or if they're closed down for any reason, then it could be considered for other possible uses. So some nature of that language I'm comfortable with. But I would like to, I do think that on the page LU9 where we have the survey of parks, that it should include McGregor. Because currently, what people are going to see there and what they've heard is that we are turning that into a park. We should identify it as such, as one of our inventory of parks. And if you want to put a footnote in there to some, you know, I think that's fine. But I just think that this should be consistent with what council's direction, you know, has been on that particular piece of property.
We're missing a park on here, too. The one at the corner of Warf Road and Stockton Avenue.
Right.
Yeah.
Famous Stockton Bridge Park. Smallest park in the world.
Small, but mighty.
Mighty, yes, it is.
We have guidance.
Yeah, we'll modify that language as suggested.
There are comments from the audience about this language and about the use of McGregor. Any other comments from the planning commissioners about this? I think it'll be very interesting to see how well-used this park is, whether it's used or it's well-used or...
Abused.
Yeah, or it becomes a problem, or whether people aren't wearing their skateboard helmets and we have a terrible accident like they did in Scotts Valley. And it'll be very, very interesting to see what happens here. It'll be an interesting trial, and hopefully all will go well, but we don't want it to be a problem, so.
Think positive, Steph.
Yes. Okay, any other comments on this? Okay, we'll go to the next one.
Okay, the final issue that we were presenting to you this evening was the reference in the general plan to West Capitola and 41st Avenue is the North Forties. This is in the general plan based on prior comments we received to refer to the neighborhood as the North Forties. Following our inclusion of this designation, we did receive comments from the public and members of the general plan advisory committee that they would prefer that it not be referred to as the North Forties.
Could you quantify that? Because I saw one person comment on that, and I couldn't find any other written comments come through.
To remove the comment?
I didn't see a ground swell anywhere. Maybe I was looking at the wrong place.
It was discussed at the last general plan advisory committee. A couple of committee members discussed it and thought that it shouldn't have that reference.
I gotta apologize. I brought up the North Forties at the G-PAC.
Oh, of course, of course.
Because I've always known it as the North Forties, but I'm not in love with the name or anything. But I think the designation is more appropriate because if you think of West Capitola, we have all the Dean's Lane area, we have the Corinthian Apartments out to 38th, we have the new Lydic development off of Capitola Road, we have Sherway Avenue and those down at 30th and Capitola Road that are all West Capitola. And you're trying to delineate an area north of Capitola Road between Warf Road and approximately the back of the commercial properties on the east side of 41st Avenue. And that's the reason I think North Forties is appropriate. But I'm sorry I raised this all this...
Stephanie, you lived there. What do you want to call your neighborhood?
Well, people don't really call it very much of anything, and...
The avenues, it's the avenues, right.
And that's the problem. That's the problem. It's not a commonly used word, and so that's why it's kind of a surprise to people. But that's always historically been what it's called.
The North Forties, 50 years that I can recall.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they don't say I'm going up to walk on the North Forties today, you know? Like, they'll say I'm going for a walk up on Depot Hill, or I'm going to walk to the Jewel Box, or I live in Cliffwood Heights, or, you know, people, some of the people know the Fairview Tract, the Buell Tract. So it's just, unfortunately, it's just...
It's kind of an outgrowth of the way that whole area's developed because it really doesn't have a focal point or an identity to it. I mean, it's a mix of multi-residential and single-family homes.
I've always noticed the avenues.
There you go.
I would call him the chair of the G-PAC committee because I believe early on, it was a member of the committee that stated that that's what, it was referenced at, and we went along with that recommendation, if my memory's right.
Well, I don't have that memory, and this one really caught me off-guard, I must say. But the most interesting comments that came out at the G-PAC hearing were there are people who said that this is an accepted term in agricultural areas in the Midwest. And so that's why they thought it was derogatory for an area of Capitola to be called the North Forties. It's like, you know, out in the boonies in the agricultural section of town.
It used to be an agricultural area.
It used to be agricultural.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was.
I can remember Nick Creago's garden.
I mean, I think it's a good issue to end this session on because of its momentous significance.
Was there a lot of opposition? Was it one comment?
No, I mean, I think I received, you know, I've heard since I've been here, maybe two comments that it should be in there, and maybe two or three that it shouldn't be. At the G-PAC meeting, they said, you know, this should be an issue discussed by the planning commission and city council, so that's why it's here tonight. I don't feel strongly about it.
The left side, there was an attempt to change the name of the Buell Tract a few years ago.
That's right, yes.
I can't remember what they wanted it called.
River View, something.
No, it was a fancy, a real fancy name.
I hear comments that people feel left out if they don't have a designator to where they live. You know, it was something about creating an area for the Trotter area. They wanted to have a name for that, and I read in the notes, so I'm almost like, well, they have a name and it actually is somewhat legitimate, unless they deemed that it's derogatory. That's definitely not our intent. North Forty Estates. I don't know, we could... It's elevated. I don't know what to do.
Well, we could do what they do in New York City and San Francisco and all the big cities. We could abbreviate the words, and we could call it NOFO.
That's way too close, and I'm not, I got nothing up here. I have nothing, I'm done.
But the Derby Trotter area does have a name. You can say I'm going, I live in the Derby Trotter area. That's what that area's always been called. And people don't know that there's another little section of 42nd Avenue up there. And actually, there's three sections of 42nd Avenue. So it's, you know, maybe we need a, maybe we need a celebration or an event or something to happen there so that people will, you know, will know what the name is and say, "We're having a community garage sale in the North Forties, come."
They need a park, that's what they need.
One suggestion on how to address it would be, you know, in the general plan documents just generally refers to it as West Capitola, 41st Avenue. And we did receive some comments about the Trotter neighborhood and others. What we could do is expand the description of this area, include some more of the neighborhoods, historical names, but not officially designate an area as the West Forties. Might be a compromise.
Yeah.
No, there's no West Forties, only North Forties.
Excuse me.
Don't start a new one.
And the names have changed over the years, too, because if you look at the old maps, those, you know, some of those streets were not Forties. They were, they had other different names. And Warf Road, I think, had a different name. Claire's had a different name, so. The library neighborhood. Okay, any comments from the public on the name of the North Forties? West Capitola?
Really?
They're not touching this one or the 10-foot wall.
You develop a park there, called it the North Forties Park, everybody would adopt it as the North Forties.
Done. One sign. All it's going to take is one sign. We're done.
Madam chairperson, he said this was the last item he had tonight, and I want to know where we're going a little bit. I understand what we're doing with this, and I understand what the consultants principal said and the rest of it. I spent a great deal of time, as I'm sure all of you did, reading the proposed draft general plan. And as you can see, I've got tabs on a lot of pages, and I met with staff to go over those tabs, so I don't intend to go page by page with them. But I would like to, for the public record, highlight some of the things that I think need to be addressed in the final version of the general plan for the next 20 years. One of the areas that I think has totally been forgotten is that we seem to, a number of years ago, voted on a very important issue here in Capitola, and that had to do with oil and gas expiration off the coast, and it's raising its head again. And I believe that there should be a statement in here under the, several of the elements because it affects air quality, it affects tourism, it affects the economy, all those things. And I just think that a blanket statement that says that we did not support that type of endeavor in the Monterey Bay Sanctuary is appropriate in this document. The other one of major concern to me is that this is a 20-year document, and in my lifetime here in Capitola, and from what we've heard tonight and our just recent discussion on the North Forties, I have seen businesses in Capitola change their names many times. And I think in a document such as this, when we delineate items like Monarch Cove and things like that, that I know has had three names in my lifetime, and that they should be designated as the area, the commercial area at the east end of Depot Hill or something like that, as opposed to... like that, as opposed to Monarch Cove, or, you know, the Mercantile Building, which is, you know, was Capitola Bowl. You know how many things it was. I just think we ought to take the exact proper name of what it is now doing business out of a general plan document. I didn't receive any agreement with that, and I don't expect to hear when I went before the G-PAC with that suggestion. But I think that the document will be old before its 20 years, because I think in the economy that we have today, things are changing very rapidly. Having said those two things, there are a lot of specific words and thoughts in here that bothered me when I got an explanation from Rich. I offered at that time to give him the document so that the consultants and he and the staff can see all these things, and I intend to do that tonight. And a lot of it is, you know, maybe wordsmithing at best, and I'd like to offer that rather than go through them page by page. I've said my piece, and I thank you for the time.
One recommendation I have is to, on page six, to extend the public review period from December 2013 to January of 2014 for a couple more months. People don't do stuff over the holidays. People are not going to be poring over this document, I don't think, during the holidays. Everybody's swamped. So I think, you know, they just don't, they take time off, you know, to be with their families, and that's just, that's just a bad time. So maybe, you know, extend it another month, or six weeks, or something like that. And...
That's what I need to know.
Hi.
I need to see that.
On page 10, it's a suggestion about strengthen Capitol, strengthen the Capitol, strengthen connections to Capitol Village while minimizing impacts on adjacent neighborhoods was the comment. And the response was to strengthen connections to Capitol Village by improving pedestrian and bicycle facilities into the village. Was there anything that you were thinking of specifically?
Bike lanes, you know, the kind of complete streets theory, wider sidewalks, you know, landscaping that makes it attractive and safer, streetlights, things of that nature.
Okay.
Minimizing the frequency of driveways.
I just have one thing that's been a pet for a long time. On page LU 38, it talks about, we're talking in public facilities, it mentions the Capitol War, maintaining it as a free public access fishing pier. And then under the action plan for the war, it doesn't really specify anything in regards to the war, but it would be nice if we could put something in the general plan that over the next 20 years, if we could consider developing a restroom, a public restroom at the foot of the war. So absolutely needed on that end of the beach.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we did, we did talk about it a number of years ago, and it was not supported by all the council members at the time.
Perhaps we could roll that into our plan to redo the restrooms at the other end of the war. You know, it's a...
Yeah, we can make that.
What we were thinking about doing is moving that bathroom somewhere, and then putting windows on the restaurant, so the restaurant would have more visibility and be more of a draw.
Yeah, that's the one I was talking about.
Be more slightly than the outhouses.
Yeah.
But only during Warf to Warf, you know.
I'd like to talk about density at some point, too, because we allow 10 units per acre in RM. And I think that our next meeting, maybe we could look at that whole topic and see if there's anything we want to do so that we don't end up with these large infill developments that are too crowded for the street, too crowded for the neighbors and the neighborhood.
Yeah, we can talk more about densities, for sure. The general plan is proposing to retain the current densities. Single-family residential zones would have the same density allowances, 10 dwelling units an acre. The higher-density areas for multifamily go up to 20, and so we're proposing to retain those current designations.
Yeah, I think that we should talk about it, just to see where everybody is. Another issue is the question of the sphere of influence. Should we be looking at changing our sphere of influence and dropping Opel Cliffs area? Why do we have it, why do we have it in there? I know those people, some of them wanted to be annexed to Capitol years ago, and if we're not, and then the people back behind Dean's Lane wanted us to annex them, and we looked at the cost of maintaining our streets, and we said, don't call us, we'll call you, if we're interested, because it's so expensive to maintain the streets. So we didn't want another... What's the name of that street that goes back there? Back behind Dean's, from off 41st Avenue, when you turn left at the Gas Road? Gross Road. Gross Road, and it continues all the way down. There were residents on Gross Road that wanted to be annexed into Capitol, and we just, at the time, said, no, it's, you know, that's too much. But, you know, we can talk about that at the next meeting also. I know it's a lot of work to put in an application to change it, probably, but why do we, you know, this is the time to look at that.
Madam Chairperson, I have one comment, actually, on that. And on page I-4 of the general plan, under the sphere of influence, it talks about, in Capitol's case, there are no immediate plans to annex lands within the sphere of influence. These are, they're talking about, these are pleasure points so-called established, identities separate from Capitol within uncorporated county. I would ask to just, that maybe we could delete those two sentences and just let it lie where it lays. And I think that immediate plans over the next 20 years of what this is, what is that really? And relatively speaking, maybe in the next five to 10 years, we do want to annex maybe Opel Cliffs, south of 41st Avenue, down to the Hook. It's something that I think at least is worth looking at. I hate to see us tie our hands by having a document in here that says it's not in our interest to do that right now.
I don't, I don't think south of 41st Avenue would ever happen, because it's in the county's redevelopment, former redevelopment agency area.
Doesn't exist anymore, though.
Yeah, it doesn't exist.
We can always annex it.
It's in our sphere of influence. I think, actually, it wouldn't tie our hands if we just eliminate, not that we're going to do it, but...
I agree with TJ, but I'd like to know why it would be in there. Is there a reason that we're not thinking of why it would be in there?
It was, it was, it's just been in there forever.
Yeah, it's, the AMBAG determined that that's in our sphere of influence. I mean, we, there was a point at which they were considering...
I mean, the part that we talk about not, not having any plans to annex it, is that, is there a reason why that sentence is in there?
I think if we just delete it, it doesn't do any harm or foul it, and they just open to...
That's right.
Probably, because we can't annex it. It's up to a vote of the people that live there.
Well, and our discussion at the time, when that fellow from Gross Road came, was that residential doesn't pay for itself, and we're having to, the property taxes doesn't pay for the services that are provided. And if we were going to have to fix not only the roads, but send our police out there and Public Works out there, and, you know, crews out there, it wouldn't pay for itself. And we were on a kind of a tight budget, as we've always been. And financially, it didn't make sense, so I'm...
But if you included the other end of 41st Avenue with Opel Cliffs, there would be some balance there.
Yep. But you'd have to get, you'd have to get the okay of the county and LPO, and that would never happen, I don't think, politically.
Well, I don't think we know, and I think the question's being raised here is, this goes back to the consider, okay? I mean, if it's advantageous for Capitol to annex a piece of property, then it's, and it's fiscally in our, in our favor, I think we should keep that as an option. I think the sphere of influence is designed to enhance the city, but, I mean, I'm into the point of it should definitely be a consideration, because 20 years from now, we don't know if the county is going to be downsized and if they're going to, because what we've seen, the history is, is they have not pushed the sphere of influence. But in other counties in the state, they do. They do say, get rid of the small infill projects and attach them to local cities. But it would only be something we'd be interested in if it was, I mean, quite frankly, in our advantage. And that would be the only...
Well, it was, it was brought up, and there was a grand jury report a number of years ago, and it's recommended that they split Live Oak in half, and half should be annexed to Capitol, and the other half should be annexed to Santa Cruz. And Jan Butts called me up, and she said, was that one of your ideas, or one of your council's ideas? And I said, I never heard it before. I said, I read it in the report. We've never discussed it. And she said, Live Oak people like Live Oak. They don't want to be part of Capitol. They don't want to be part of Santa Cruz. They like their own identity, you know, don't even think about it. And I said, I'm not thinking about it. And so...
Jan Butts is still mad for annexing them all.
Yeah, you know, that's, I know. See, that's never going to happen again, that the county's going to, you know, get away with losing revenues on lower 41st.
If we annex anything, we should annex 40th Avenue, and that, then we could take the barrier down.
Right.
Develop it as commercial, and relieve all the problems at the Gross Road intersection.
Anyway, well, let's talk about it some more at another meeting, and just get some more information.
Sure.
I have a question about the path on Prospect Avenue. I walked it not too long ago, and it's really dangerous, the one that's right along the railroad tracks.
Railroad tracks.
Is that, and at one time, we, you know, spent some money, put a plaque up there, put the new stairs out. Did we, did we declare that that's public right-of-way?
Like, like we do with River View Park?
I mean, it's...
Along the railroad.
Oh, that one. Oh, yeah, there's a couple spots in there where it's pretty nasty.
Yeah, we need to do something about it. It's dangerous.
Well, those, those property, the property lines that you see now that are defined, those are, that fence line is the property line, so everything east of that is, and RTC property, though.
So it's not city right-of-way?
No, it's RTC.
Then we should, we should send them a letter, because that's a huge liability. Somebody's going to trip and fall there, and it's really not safe. So maybe we could take a look at that and write the RTC and ask them if they would...
Maybe the city should just go up there and maintain it so they don't block it off.
That's a, that's a good thought. We'll just take a look. They'd probably tell us to repair it anyway, that they don't have the funds.
After today's meeting at the RTC, we found out for Capitol, if the sidewalk for the scenic trail is not on the west side, or the south side of the railroad tracks, they don't want to fund anything. And the path you're talking about is on the north side of the railroad tracks. Fund fortunately.
That's right.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Dennis was there, he can fill you in.
At some point, I do have one point that I'd like to bring up.
Oh, sure, go ahead now.
And it's just because I know this is going to go, if we all agree, out for public review, and there was one policy that was removed from the draft that I read, and I was really disappointed to see it removed. It's on page OSC 16, policy OSC 34, on wood burning fireplaces. And in the draft, it was worded to discourage the installation of wood burning fireplaces in new and significantly renovated residential projects. And I understand there was some input, it's unclear how, what the magnitude of the input from the public that wanted that removed. It doesn't say ban, it doesn't ban anything, but I think it's a healthy discussion from a policy level, and I wanted to bring it up while, you know, we're all together, especially 20 years from now. It may not have an impact on the overall air quality, because we're so close to the bay and we have such good wind, but in residential neighborhoods, the fireplace burning of wood and trash and that kind of thing can really change the air quality around the residences. I can't open any of my windows on one side of my house, because I have a neighbor who burns a fireplace every night, and on the other side, it's River View Avenue down low, and of course, smoke travels up. And so there are a lot of jurisdictions in the area that have banned the traditional wood burning fireplaces. You can have a gas, a gas fireplace, or even the pellets. There are some new technologies that give you the same ambiance and the same level of heat in the house. So I would like to see us leave that in the draft and get more public input. If everybody disagrees with it, then we can take it out, you know, before the final. But I'd just like to get more input on that issue, and this seems like the perfect time to do it.
Well, I know the air quality district came down on San Lorenzo Valley. Maybe Sam can talk about that a little bit.
Does frequently discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you make a very good point about the potential for, you know, diminished air quality from wood burning fireplaces. And we were, I sat on the air board, and we were approached by some residents there, because if you've ever been to San Lorenzo Valley on the winter cold, winter mornings, and particularly if there's an inversion layer, that smoke just sits in that valley. And so, you know, serious conditions there. So what the air board did, we certainly don't have the jurisdiction to ban people, and wouldn't want to attempt to ban people from using their wood burning stoves. For a lot of folks up there, that's all they have. But we implemented some policies and put some funding to help subsidize the purchase of alternatives to wood burning stoves, the pellets, the gas stoves, those more efficient. And so that is encouraging people to swap out and switch. We also banned just open burning. Now you have to get a permit to do a burn in the valley. And so, and that's also helped a great deal there. So I would, I would certainly think that we should pay some deference to trying to, the ability to maintain the air quality, and maybe instead of saying discouraging one type, but in saying encouraging the use of more efficient, you know, stoves, heating elements, and that are, you know, don't put so much particulates and smog into our air. That may be another way to phrase that. So people don't think that we're coming out, because I don't think this is meant that we're going to come yank out your wood stove, but, you know, as time progresses, we want to try to encourage people to start to switch over.
I don't think I'm wrong in saying discouraging. You know, we're not banning anything.
It's really not a hardship today. Very few people put applications in for wood burning. I don't think I've seen one in four or five years now. Everybody goes to the gas otherwise. So I don't know that we can take away what we have, but certainly, if you, if you decide to write in, no wood burning fireplaces in Capitol, it's not a big hardship.
Well, no, I don't think we're talking about banning them. I think we're talking about making a statement that speaks to our concern with air quality in Capitol.
Discourage them.
Discouraging it. And it's more, I don't think it's going to change a lot of things. Like you said, I haven't seen one in a long time either, but I think it does make a positive statement for our concern with the environment in Capitol.
And in this, under the sphere of influence, again, would you look at the area at Capitol Beach? Because there's a boundary line around that. And I believe we're the only coastal community that owns our beach. Most of it, most of it all is not owned by the local entity, but to mean high tide or something like that. Maybe you could just put a sentence in there about that.
We own the beach all the way to New Brighton, along the base of the bluff, too.
Yeah.
That's part of our public lands.
Right. And I have a, I have a wish that we can improve Kennedy Drive, and I don't know how, or whether it needs to be in the general plan, but that's an area that if we ever found some extra money and could give grants to those property owners for landscaping, or we could, you know, for trees and shrubs and whatever we think would improve that area, because it's, that's really a need of improvement, and so, or if we could somehow work on that, that this is the time to look at that. That's, that's not a very attractive area, and it could be at least a little bit better with better landscaping.
Are you talking about the residential portion, or the portion over towards...
The commercial, the commercial, yeah. And, you know, we just located a really nice, couple of new businesses down there, and the winery and the brewery, and people have to drive through this awful area to, you know, it's not a very attractive area to get there. On OCS 4, it talks about a leaf blower ordinance. I remember that was brought up, but I thought we turned it down.
We have, we have one.
We have, we passed one. What does it say?
We have one that talks about residential use of leaf blowers during certain hours. It doesn't ban anything.
Oh, okay.
But it just, it delineated the hours that you...
The hours, okay, okay. And then on OCS 5, there's some discussion about plastic, and we should, up at the very top of the page, page OCS 5, the first line, it says plastics ordinance. The city adopted an ordinance to ban the use of polystyrene foam food service ware and prohibits the sale of polystyrene products within the city, or however we phrase that. Dennis, you know about that.
Retail products of polystyrene.
Yeah, retail products, so we can, we should add that.
Okay.
And...
But also plastic bags. Because we also, you know...
The plastic bag ordinance.
Right.
With the sale of them, you're saying?
Yeah.
We don't allow retailers to carry them.
You cannot go into, you cannot go into Grady's and buy polystyrene cups for your picnic, or Novil, or any...
What about Ziploc sandwich bags? What about Ziploc sandwich bags? No, those aren't banned.
No, those are, we promote Ziploc.
Those are, we're just talking about the old, the old Styrofoam cups that...
But we did ban single-use plastic bags, you know, so that should be added to this, too.
And a Ziploc is not a single use always.
And then there's a...
Depends on what you're buying in it.
There's a picture of a fruit stand, where is that in Capitola? I don't recognize that.
Yeah, it's not.
It's the, it's the Capitola Produce.
No, no, it's the strawberry.
Isn't it? Oh, the strawberry. Oh, that's an ancient, that's a...
Where is that?
I think somebody got into Carolyn Swift's...
Where is that? That's probably one of the ones that you guys are going to redo, right? You have several in there that you're going to redo.
Maybe, I don't think they ask Capitola.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's Capitola.
I got to see where it is.
It looks like Colton.
Says produce stand in...
There it is. It's on 198 Colton. I'm just making a guess, you know.
It might be historic, you know, maybe it used to be on 41st Avenue, where there's strawberry field for it.
Actually...
You remember it, Ron would remember it.
I believe it's where Nob Hill was at one time.
Yeah, I think I actually do.
But those cars look newer.
I think we could find a better picture.
OCS dash 27.
Oh, their cars are newer.
Yeah.
It could have come out of, by accident, happened before with the name in there.
Take a picture of Capitola Produce.
Yeah, Linda.
I have a question. The, the plan that goes out, if, if we agree to initiate a public review, what the public is going to be reviewing is what? Is it this document? Is it this document with all these changes? What exactly is it?
Yeah, after tonight's meeting, if we get authorization to proceed, we will revise the document based on input from the G-PAC, members of the public, and of course, the Planning Commission, City Council. Then release it for public review. We'll get public comments, we'll review those, make revisions to the environmental impact report and general plan, and then present that revised document for adoption later next year.
So we don't really have to go through this document line by line tonight to achieve that goal? We've pretty much hit the, the highlights, and then after it goes out for public review and comes back, there'll be many more opportunities to go page by page and word by word.
Yeah, there's at least a couple, few more opportunities to make refinements to this document.
And if I could add to that, we would welcome, I know Commissioner Graves already mentioned that he's going to give us comments in writing, and any comments you have at that level of detail, we'll very much appreciate getting them in writing, and we'll be very happy to go through them all, whether it's tonight, or, you know, just before this current draft is released, or as the review occurs. You don't have to go over them line by line at a meeting, you can give them to us in writing, and we'll be happy to incorporate them that way.
Good. Any other comments from the, everyone? Sam?
I have one. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a pitch for community programs. Capitola has had a long history of supporting community programs, and seniors principally. There's no mention or discussion, even from a historical standpoint, or a policy standpoint. I'm not actually saying it should be an action standpoint, but I would just like to see in this draft that some reference or comment about that should go out, so that the public can weigh in on that. And, yeah, if they don't, they don't want to continue that history, or that tradition, then that would give us some feedback about making some potential changes. But it's been a long, established use of community resources. I think that it should either be referenced in here, or some process where we, you know, if the community no longer desires it, then we have some basis, our future councils, to either eliminate or reduce it. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Good. Dennis?
We're all elected or appointed officials up here, and we will need to receive comments from 13 people on this general plan. So in, in reality, the future of the city for the next 30 years is in our hands, and this is a lead document, so it makes it that much more extremely important, and on our shoulders to, to take care of this. I have a real concern right now, and, and I don't think this has been created overnight, but over a period of time, is that, is that we have so many major issues and projects that are temporary in nature. In other words, we got to make some hard decisions. And I'm going to give you a short list of, of things that we have in our community that we, we need to make a decision on, partially in this document, at least giving staff direction of how to deal with them. The Lower Pacific Cove is a temporary, is a temporary situation. Jade Street Park is temporary. We haven't resolved our issues with the school district, or whether we even have or own a park there. We have the Rispin property that we cocooned, and we haven't made a decision on what we're going to do with that property. We have the McGregor property, that appears that we have a use in there, but even in the use, we call it temporary, because it could be something else. We have a library that we know we want to have one, and we're starting to fund it, but we haven't set down and determined the exact location for it, or what it should be. We have a city hall that, that there's a question of whether we should relocate out the floodplain, or whether it should stay here. We got two, you know, theater property, whether it is a hotel, or whether it's not a hotel, and how it's affected. So there's, there's a lot of questions that I think that this, this document in some way has to give direction to the community, and anybody that comes in that wants to develop or use these properties, we have to give them that direction in this document, because this will be what staff will be using to, to guide us for, for the next 20 years on this. And so I think it's, it's time for us to really make some decisions and get something done, you know? This, it's a time right now in the history of the city to do that. So that's my pitch.
I'd also like to put a pitch in for changing our landscaping guidelines, and for future new remodels or construction, not allowing grass. And if you notice, the dentist office on 41st Avenue put in that nice big green patch, that's artificial turf, and looks a little strange, but it's okay, it's green, I guess. But, you know, to actually require people to, that they have to, when they're going to build a, tear down a house and build a new house, they have to use drought tolerant. They can't put in lawns, because we're simply not going to have the water to, to deal with it. Now, I don't know about front yard and backyard, you know, how you want to deal with that, because people do like a little greenery in their backyard, that they're enjoying it. But, you know, we shouldn't be allowing lawns in the, in the front yards, I don't think, anymore. So maybe we can talk about that later.
Do we need a motion, Stephanie?
Yes. Oh, and do you want to make a comment?
I just have one last simple comment. There, there was a lot of comments made about the photos, and if we are going to include photos in the document, I would like to see them all be good quality photos, and I don't see the need to repeat photos. Every photo should be unique, and...
Actually, Dennis, in terms of procedure, the Planning Commission has to make their motion first.
Good.
And so what we need to do from the Planning Commission is entertain a motion, and to release the, or to initiate the public review of the draft general plan and the environmental impact report.
Who?
Second.
We have a motion, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.